I will call a regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order at 7:30. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Pietzou. Alderman Gidge will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Philosope God with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us God. Amen.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in the heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wilshire. Alderman Gidge.
Yeah.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cle. Alderman Laws. Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Shashat, Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie. Alderwoman Maliza Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt. Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
We have 11 members present.
Alderman Wilshire is unable to join us this evening. Alderwomen Cle and Schmidt are at a meeting of the county delegation and hope to be here shortly. Also present are Mayor James Donches and Corporation Counsel Stephen Bolton. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you very much. First, yesterday, we held the state primary. And here in Nashua, I want to say that our City Clerk Pietzou, Patricia Pietzou, and her staff performed admirably as usual. We had a lot of people vote, especially on one Democratic side, more than were expected. And we also had a group of newer or new moderators and clerks at the various wards. And so the ward workers are not quite as experienced as they could be. They're gating that experience quickly now. But City Clerk Pietzou and her staff did a great job of running a very smooth election. I know they were here very late last night and very early in the morning, so I just wanted to thank her and Commander on a, you know, another great job in making sure that the elections here in Nashua run smoothly. Second, Mr. President, I wanted to mention that we have the escrows on the budget to be voted on. I appeared and talked to some depth with the Budget Committee about this, these, at the last meeting of the Budget Committee, but I wanted to mention a couple of basic things about them for, especially for Aldermen who have not been here through this before. This, we are, what we're doing is reallocating money that had been previously appropriated for various purposes, but which was not spent during the course of the fiscal year. Now, this is money that, again, had previously been appropriated. When the cap was in effect, this was always pre, you know, already cap-qualified money because it always, it was already appropriated under a cap. And I will remind the board, which I'm sure you know, that this year, we passed a budget that was up only 1.6 percent, nearly a million dollars below what the cap maximum would have been had the cap still been effective. And one of the lower budgets we've seen in quite some time. The principal, the vast majority of the proposed escrows will go into various reserve accounts, the Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, which is future expenditure on equipment that the city will ultimately need, as well as building reserve accounts, risk reserve accounts, other ways to save money towards the future. So these, the money that is being directed into these reserve accounts is really being devoted to the taxpayers in the sense that saving a dollar now means that we won't have to spend a dollar later or appropriate a dollar later. And I think it's a conservative way to go. It's following a procedure that the city has adopted and implemented for many, for a number of years. And so I hope the board will follow the recommendation of the Budget Committee and recommend the escrows. I think there's one amendment, but pass the recommendation of the Budget Committee. Next, Mr. Chair, we have the, tomorrow, the Mohawk Tannery Meeting with the neighborhood over by the tannery, the Little Florida and the other streets around the tannery, and anyone else from the public or the Board of Aldermen. Hopefully, some Aldermen will, I know you will, but you're also obviously invited and encouraged to attend. That will be at the Amherst Street School at 7:00. And at that time, the purpose is to meet with neighbors, to get their input as to how we should proceed with respect to the recommendation or the proposal of the EPA regarding the capping or cleanup of the old tannery site. Now, we're going to get in a lot more detail about this tomorrow, but suffice it to say that there is no agreement or deal or anything with the developer or the EPA. The, to approve any kind of proposal like this would require multiple Aldermanic votes on various issues, a bonding, rezoning, the creation of a TIP. All this would require public input, some of official public hearings, Aldermanic votes, planning board, I'd probably go there a couple different times. So this, were we to, my point being that there could, there isn't and there couldn't be any agreement. What we're trying to do is just find out what people think we should do at this point. Should we do the capping thing, or should we try to hold out for some maybe longer-term, more, different solution? So I'm looking forward to meeting with the neighborhood and getting their input, getting their thoughts, now that they've met with the EPA, met with at least one developer, the proposed developer, and find out, you know, what they think about how we should go forward. And really, if the neighborhood can reach a consensus, I think that's the direction in which we should actually proceed. Next, Mr. President, now, you often, you sometimes accuse me of filibustering, so I don't want to go on too long here, but I've got another topic that I wanted to touch on, which is the assessments. Now, the notices have gone out to all the properties. The total value of the city and the, and the commercialist, not all of the residential properties, and this week, the end of the week, the assessment notices will go out to all of the commercial, meaning the shopping malls, the multifamily apartment complexes, the industrial properties. All those notices are going to go out at the end of the week. The total value of the city is likely to climb by over $2 billion, from about $8.3 billion current assessments, to $10.5 billion or thereabouts. Now, as we've discussed before, this is not something that we undertook because we wanted to. We undertook this because there is a state law and even a provision of the state constitution which requires that every community reevaluate, reassess every five years. And that means take everything to 100 percent of fair market value. This has been done in Hollis recently, Merrimack, and other communities all around New Hampshire. We hired KRT because at the beginning, the, and this all gets a little bit technical, but the equalization ratio for commercial properties was in the mid-'90s, meaning that the approved sales, the qualified sales that had been analyzed suggested that commercial properties were, on average, at 95, assessed at 90 percent of fair market value, whereas the residential properties were more like 80 percent. Had those numbers held, it would have resulted in a large, significant shift of the burden from commercial onto residential because the commercial values would have gone up a little bit while residential values went up a lot. So the portion of the whole represented by the residential values would have climbed. But I think we made the right decision. You approved it to hire KRT, experts in developing income, the income approach and other ways of evaluating commercial property. They looked at some of the sales that had previously been disqualified, and in the end, commercial values have gone up nearly as much as residential. But what has happened is that within the residential sector, there's been a lot of dispersion as to what has happened in terms of the value of properties. We have properties that went up not at all, or whose, which, or the assessment on which went down a little bit. On the other hand, there are properties where the assessment went up 25, 30, 40, or 50 percent. Now, obviously, this is unfortunate for the people whose values are going up so much, but this is what the market beyond Nashua and in the city reflects, that homes that, you know, sold for $200,000 five years ago might be selling for $280 today. Because the total value of the property is going to go up, the tax rate is going to go down, no question about it. We're projecting, it's now at 2579. It will go below 22 and be somewhere between 22 and 21, probably closer to 21 than 22. So the tax rate is going to go down, you know, probably more than $4. And as a result, the idea that if your assessment goes up 20 percent, your taxes are going to go up 20 percent, that clearly is not going to hold. But kind of in the middle of the spectrum, where an assessment might go up 22 or 23 percent, you might see the taxes go up a little bit, several percent. For people whose assessments went up 10 or 15 percent, their taxes are going to actually fall. For someone who went down, you know, stayed the same or went down, those taxes will go down significantly. For someone whose assessment went up 40, 50 percent, unfortunately, those, their taxes will go up quite a bit. And that is an unfortunate part of this, one reason that we sought a delay, just because we didn't want to see anyone pay higher taxes. But this is what the market, and the market suggests and state law really demands. Now, what we are trying, what we need to ensure is that anyone who has a problem regarding their assessment and believes that it is too high, or too low, I probably won't see too many of those complaints, but believes that their assessment is not right, or that the assessment of some of their neighbors is too low, and we have gotten that, you may hear that tonight, actually, there is a process to follow, which is to go to a KRT meeting, one of which is being held tonight in Ward 5, lay out the facts and ask them to review your property or the other property that you want them to look at. And they will do that. You're not limited to the, you know, the, we've, we're moving, they're moving through the wards, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, but you can go to another ward. You don't, you know, they're trying to get mostly people from each ward to go to that meeting so that the, a number of meetings, you know, so that that works most efficiently. But you can go to anyone. And the reason, and then ultimately, they will look at your property, the city assessors will review it, and ultimately, if you still disagree, there is a process of, an abatement request that can be formally made, then the Board of Assessors will review. If you don't agree with their conclusion, you can appeal to the Board of Land and Tax Appeals or to the Superior Court. This is laid out in state law. And I've tried to make it clear to anyone who has raised this, when there have been certainly a few people, that we as elected officials cannot get involved. And I, as mayor, in two terms before and one term now, have never intervened in any single assessment case. Why? Because this cannot be a political process. It has to be based upon the facts, a very complicated set of criteria which the assessors apply, and it has to be based upon the merits of each case. We cannot have a situation where if you talk to the mayor, you talk to the right Alderman, you get lower taxes. That would undermine the complete integrity of the system. Mistakes can be made, but those mistakes are, will be good faith mistakes, not based upon who you know or who you are or anything like that, based upon the objective evaluation of KRT, of the assessment people, and ultimately, of the Board of Land, of the Board of Assessors, then the Land and Tax Appeal or the Superior Court. So, I know that was a little long, but I think it's, you know, a matter of great concern to the community, and I think we may, need to make it clear that everybody is doing their best to give everyone a fair hearing, to make sure that all taxes are based upon fair market value, and that this is not a process where the Board of Aldermen or the mayor or individual Alderman can intervene to try to influence an individual assessment, either the person, the assessment of the person's complaining, or an assessment down the street that they think is wrong. Finally, I thank you for not giving me the hook, Mr. President. And finally, Saturday, we have the Multicultural Festival at the Elm Street Middle School, which I think will be great. We have a lot of different cultures coming in with food and entertainment from 12 to 4. I hope everybody who has any free time that day can consider trying to attend. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Any responses to the treatise of the mayor? Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to echo the sentiment of appreciation towards City Clerk Pietzou and her staff. I know Ward 4 had a particularly large turnout for a state primary, and there were some new moderators, new clerks, but she shepherded them through it, and I just wanted to express that appreciation. I also want to acknowledge that this was a pretty conservative budget season, and I raised some objections to, maybe it was a little bit too stark in terms of some programs that were addressing our most needy. But it was through the leadership of President McCarthy and Alderman Dowd that, you know, assured us that we were on the right track and there was a purpose for this. And I think without that leadership, we would not have a plan with all the property evaluations. The sticker shock that the, that, you know, property owners are feeling right now was something we were warned about, something we were planning for. So I appreciate that. And then also, I wanted to thank the mayor for his comments regarding the tannery and willingness to meet with the neighbors tomorrow.
Any other responses? Alderwoman Lozegolia.
I would also like to echo the thank you to the city clerk and all of the workers. I know it's a long day, and I know some of them were working even prior to the election counting ballots and doing all of that work, so thank you. Mayor Donches, you mentioned the criteria that was used to determine the property values, and I was asked where someone could find that information. Is it posted anywhere online?
Well, there are so-called property cards. Now, it's now an online record, but it used to be on a, you know, a card, so it's called a property card. You can see the property card for each property online and get the basic information. But of course, you know, the, the most basic criteria are how large the house is, what neighborhood it is, how many square feet, how many rooms. But deeper than that, you have questions of the grade of the property, which has to do with the quality of the construction. There is a depreciation factor, which includes a couple of kind of subsets, which, one of which is condition, average, over, you know, good, excellent, based upon the improvements and the quality of the improvements that are made. You know, each house can, each room can have a different condition.
Right.
The kitchen might be average, the best, the thing upstairs, the bed, the bathroom upstairs might be excellent. And also, they, some, they often estimate the effective year, year of the, effective built year, in other words, if a house was built in 1920 but upgraded to kind of 1960 standards. Now, that is all sort of looked at together to determine by the assessor, but that's why I'm saying, you know, it's hard for us as laypeople who've done into this, who haven't, don't have training and all this, to get into all that and try to decide how all those factors work together and how that should come out. I mean, some people have raised the issue of, well, somebody got a building permit and they, and the, and the value wasn't upgraded. Well, sometimes that is a mistake in analysis, sometimes other things came into play. So the point is that, I mean, I've tried to answer what some of these criteria are, but the point is that we cannot and should not, in my opinion, ever get into, like, trying to decide how this all applies to one house, because that's why we have the Board of Assessors, that's why we have the KRT, that's why we have these professional people, that's why we have the Board of Land and Tax Appeals and everything else, because we want to keep the thing based upon the merits, the facts, and not make it look like, which we would never try to, you know, unfairly do anything, I know, but we don't want to make it look like, you know, the Aldermen are getting into, or the mayor is getting into and deciding for his or her friends, you know, who's gets what. You know, we don't want that. We want it to seem, and we want it to be, which it is, and also appear to be totally on the up and up.
Alderman McCarthy, may I just respond? Thank you. And the reason I asked is because I have been asked by people, well, how do I prepare to go in and talk to them? I don't have any sense of how they even arrived at this decision. So I will tell them to look at our minutes from tonight, and they'll at least have a sense. And I think that the people that have talked to me have said, I don't, you know, I could go in and talk to them, but I don't even know, like, what kind of facts to bring. So, thank you.
Well, you know, I think the KRT people are very, it's not, this, this meeting process is very informal. You know, you go in, I mean, I haven't done it, but, you know, you, they, people go in and talk with them, give them what you have. You know, maybe there's a sale from a few years ago, maybe there's an appraisal from a bank, maybe there's, you know, you look at the property card, maybe it says you've got three bedrooms, but actually, or four, and you've only got three, you know, maybe you, you know, took out the swimming pool last year, you know, something. Whatever you think, maybe you haven't done anything to the house in the last 70 years, you know, whatever, whatever the person thinks might, you know, be reflected unfairly, go talk to them, and they will respond to you, and then they will follow up if you wish. I mean, there are numbers on how many people have gone in, and it has ranged from like 150 down to about 50 in the four wards that have been held so far. And then there are numbers on how many people walked out saying, okay, well, I'm, you know, I'm okay, you know, maybe I'm not thrilled, but, but also on the number of people who've said, well, I'd like you to take another look and review my thing and go out and get someone to go out to the house or whatever. And there are people certainly who are doing that, and they have a perfect right to do that. And I don't think they should be intimidated by the idea that there's some sort of formal requirement as to how or what they have to say. They should go in, talk with the KRT representative, hear what they have to say, and then respond.
Thank you.
Any further responses to the remarks of the mayor? Recognition period.
First reading of Resolution 18-072, recognizing Doug Price in naming the pickleball courts at Fields Grove Park, Doug Price Pickleball Courts.
If there are no objections, the rules will be so far suspended as to allow for a second reading of R. 1872.
Second reading of Resolution 18-072, recognizing Doug Price in naming the pickleball, pickleball courts at Fields Grove Park, Doug Price Pickleball Courts.
Alderwoman Karen.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 18-072.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1872. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R. 1872 is adopted. Is Mr. Price here? I don't think so. I believe that he's actually already received the notice of this at a ceremony that was held earlier. Reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, if there are no objections, the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of August 14, 2018 will be accepted, placed on file, and the reading will be suspended. Communication requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons?
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches relative to report of, on surplus and overlay 2019.
If there are no objections, the communication will be accepted, placed on file, and referred to the Budget Committee. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. One speaker has signed up. Melburn McCran.
Melburn Moran Jr., Director of Common Street. Hello. Just a very poignant speech by the mayor, very, enjoyed it, very articulate. I'm here to discuss the ordinance regarding the land debris or debrees into the, to the street. I really don't think the police should be enforcing such laws. There's nothing important things going on in the city, up to $1,000 as a good neighbor. I don't need, I don't know, I live in Ward 7, I don't need a $1,000 over my head to be a good neighbor. I, to be honest, I don't really even have a tree in my yard, and there's nothing but clothing in the street, but in my neighborhood, something like this doesn't, this is ridiculous. That's all I had to say, I just hope you guys consider that in the law or the, thank you.
Communications requiring final approval.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches relative to the contract for landfill gas management services.
Alderwoman Lozegolia.
Yes, I move to accept, place on file, and award the three-year contract to Sanborn Head &amp; Associates for an annual amount of $12,000.
Motion is to accept, place on file, and award the three-year contract to Sanborn Head &amp; Associates for an annual amount of $12,000. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Communication from Brian S. McCarthy, President, Board of Aldermen, relative to the Performing Arts Center Steering Committee appointment.
Alderwoman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and concur in the appointment of Alderwoman Maliza Gola to the Performing Arts Center Steering Committee for a term to expire December 30, 2019.
Motion is to accept, place on file, and concur in the appointment of Alderwoman Maliza Golia to the Performing Arts Center Steering Committee for a term to expire December 31, 2019. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. I would mention that I have also asked Alderwoman Kelly to participate in some of the subcommittees. By ordinance, we have three Aldermanic appointments, but the subcommittee structure has more people on it, so I have asked her to participate particularly on the committee that I had, had been on, because I'm not sure how much time I'll be able to spend at that committee at this point. Petitions.
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed the following individuals to the Tax Increment Financing Advisory Board for terms to expire September 30, 2019. Rob Carroll, 141 Canal Street, Nashua. Michael Serrato, Four Water Street, Suite 201, Nashua. Eric Drouet, 52 Main Street, Unit 206. Chris Lewis, 670 North Commercial Street, Manchester. Tia... Tia Phillips, 2 Clock Tower Place, Nashua. Arthur Spiliels, 15 Technology Way, Nashua. And as ex-official members to the committee, Tim Cummings, Economic Development Division Director, Sarah Marchant, Director of Community Development Division, and David G. DeFredette, Treasurer-Tax Collector, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed.
If there are no objections, the appointments will be accepted as read and referred to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, if there are no objections, the report of the Budget Committee of September 6, 2018 will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no objection, the reports of the Finance Committee of August 15 and September 5, 2018 will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the report of the Human Affairs Committee of August 20, 2018 will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the report of the Committee on Infrastructure of August 22, 2018 will be accepted and placed on file. And lastly, if there are no objections, the report of the Substandard Living Conditions Special Committee of August 9, 2018 will be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of the mayor's appointments?
There is none.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of Resolution 18-065, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $43,456 from the United States Department of Justice into police grant activity, 2017 justice assistant grant, multi-jurisdictional.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes, I have the final passage of R. 18065.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution R. 1865. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and R. 1865 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-067, designating trail, rail trail as Class B Trail under New Hampshire RSA 231-A.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 18067.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution R. 1867. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and R. 1867 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-068, relative to the reappropriation of fiscal year FY 2019 escrows.
Alderman Dowd?
I'd like to make a motion to amend R. 18068 in its entirety by replacing it with the proposed amendments recommended by the Budget Review Committee.
Motion is to amend R. 1868 in its entirety by replacing it with the proposed amendments recommended by the Budget Review Committee. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 18068 as amended.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution R. 1868 as amended. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and R. 1868 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-069, authorizing the city of Nashua to enter into a contract with BAE for transit services.
Alderwoman Harriet Gethrake?
I move for final passage of R. 18069.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution R. 1869. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and R. 1869 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-070, authorizing the acceptance of a license from BAE over land located on the corner of Canal Street and Nashua Drive for a bus shelter.
Alderman Tenza?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 18070.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution R. 1870. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and R. 1870 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-071, relative to the appropriation of U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Home Investment Partnership Program Funds to neighborhood of Southern New Hampshire.
Alderman Gidge?
I make a recommendation, a proposal for final passage of 18071.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution R. 1871. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and R. 1871 is adopted. Unfinished business ordinances?
Fifth reading of Ordinance 18-007, prohibiting placing or blowing yard debris in the street.
Alderwoman Melissa Golia?
Yes, I would make a motion to amend O. 18007 in its entirety by replacing it with the proposed amendments recommended by the Committee on Infrastructure.
Motion is to amend Ordinance O. 187 in its entirety by replacing it with the proposed amendments recommended by the Committee on Infrastructure. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman Melissa Golia?
Yes, I move for final passage of O. 18007 as amended.
Motion is for final passage of O. 187 as amended. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and Ordinance O. 187 is adopted as amended.
Second reading of Ordinance 18-020, prohibiting parking on a portion of the south side of East Pearl Street.
Alderman Lopez?
I'd like to move for final, or make a motion for final passage of R. 18020, prohibiting parking on a portion of the south side of East Pearl Street.
Motion is for final passage of Ordinance 1820. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and Ordinance 1820 is adopted.
Second reading of Ordinance 18-021, authorizing the city to lease parking spaces located at the Crown Street Parking Line.
Alderman Laws?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O. 1821.
Motion is for final passage of O. 1821. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries and O. 1821 is adopted. New business resolutions?
First reading of Resolution 18-073, proposing amendment to the city charter relative to the filling vacancies on elected boards by majority vote of the remaining members of that board.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Lopez, Alderman Laws, Alderwoman Melissa Golia. R. 1873 will be assigned to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution, Resolution 18-074, authorizing the city to enter into a short-term real property lease agreement for 44 Broad Street.
Additional sponsors? R. 1874 will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Resolution 18-075, establishing an expendable trust fund to accept donations for beautification projects.
Any additional sponsors? Alderwoman Melissa Golia, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Gidge, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, and Alderman O'Brien. And R. 1875 will be assigned to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution 18-076, establishing the use of fund balance for tax rate.
Any additional sponsors? Alderman Gidge, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Harriet Gethrake, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Karen, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Melissa Golia, Alderman Tenza, Alderman O'Brien, and myself. And R. 1876 will be assigned to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances?
First reading of Ordinance 18-022, authorizing free holiday parking at meters in Zone 3, which includes Elm Street and High Street parking garages from December 10, 2018 through January 4, 2019.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Gidge, Alderwoman Harriet Gethrake, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Karen, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Melissa Golia, Alderman Tenza, and Alderman O'Brien. And Alderman Lopez, did I miss you?
No, you read me.
And O. 1822 will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Ordinance 18-023, changing the Management Department and ordinances regarding parking.
Any additional sponsors? Alderman Gidge. And O. 1823 will be assigned to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of Ordinance 18-024, moving the location of a yield sign at the intersection of Walnut Street and Central Street.
Any additional sponsors? Alderman Gidge, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Laws. And O. 1824 will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Ordinance 18-18-025, amending vendor license ordinances.
Any additional sponsors? Alderman Gidge, Alderwoman Harriet Gethrake, Alderwoman Melissa Golia. And O. 1825 will be assigned to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of Ordinance 18-026, amending the zoning map by rezoning two acres of land on Amher Street from Airport Industrial, AI, to Park Industrial with mixed-use overlay district, PI/MU.
Any additional sponsors? Alderman Gidge, Alderwoman Melissa Golia, Alderman O'Brien. If there are no objections, O. 1826 will be assigned to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Nashua City Planning Board, and a public hearing will be scheduled for Tuesday, October 16, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of Ordinance 18-027, amending the airport approach zone overlay district.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Gidge, Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Melissa Golia. O. 1827, if there are no objections, will be assigned to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Nashua City Planning Board, and a public hearing will be scheduled for Tuesday, October 6, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Period for general public comment. Two people have signed up. Lori Ordolano?
Would it be possible for the second person to speak first, because my ward alderman texted me that she's on her way and would be here in a few minutes?
Um, if there's no objections, sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Moran?
I'm under my accident.
Well, it's down to you.
It is down to me. Hi, good evening, thank you for having community input. My name is Lori Ordolano, I live over at 41 Berkeley Street. I wanted to talk a little bit about to you, about concerns I have with practices in the assessing office. I came to Nashua about five years ago, and I became concerned, after a few things with my tax bill, about permits not being captured here in the city. I came from a town, and I served on as an elected official for about eight years, and where permits were always captured when work was done. And I started to recognize that that wasn't happening here, and started calling into the assessor's office, and could not really get anywhere. I elevated my concerns to other offices and was unable to make a connection. When the appraisal data came out from KRT a few weeks ago, my husband and I are both engineers, and I worked as an analyst for Westinghouse as an engineer for many years, and we're both data-driven people, so we grabbed that KRT database, and we crunched for about 30 hours on that database, and converted it from a PDF file into an Excel file, and captured a lot of records, cross-checked a lot of data, and started looking at some neighborhoods. And I became very concerned, and I came into City Hall a couple weeks ago to the permitting department and did some investigating, went upstairs to the assessor's office, had a discussion with two of the assessors there, raised many red flags, started a bit of a stir. And I know counsel Steve Bolton has been very helpful since Monday, I've spoken to him, he's been wonderfully receptive, and I'm very appreciative, and you should all be thankful you have such strong legal counsel, and I am too, that helps with the management of our city. Patricia Lee has been a wonderful alderman for me, because she is a smart lady who understands data, and that's been super for me. But I think some people within your office are not as data-oriented, and I think your assessor's office, it's just critical that the integrity of that office be solid. They create the equalization within which we all pay and contribute to the budget or the money for this city, and it has to be done fairly and equitably. So, the permitting is a huge issue for me. I certainly have uncovered, I'm going to say, 40 permits, cases of significant amounts of money not captured, that I question, and the city is looking into it, the mayor's office and now the council are looking into this. The second thing, and I am opposed to this, is the use of MLS data verific, MLS verifications on properties to change property assessments. I came from a town that did not do this practice, we do here in the city. The problem I have is that these MLS verifications are being done randomly and not to all homes sold. So, when you target certain homes and you don't do it to others, you create big discrepancies, and this is where your disproportionate assessments occur. And I have had, I must tell you as alderman, some difficulty in communicating with City Hall, that we shouldn't be talking about our tax rate, or, oh, Mrs. Ordolano, your taxes are going down, that's immaterial. What is so important to all of us is the assessment, because it is that assessment data that sets the equity and determines what we all should fairly pay. And the reason we have an appeal process in this city on appraisals and assessment data is because of that equity. I do not get to come over and complain once you set the tax rate. That, that's the end. You have good questions about KRT. I think it's a difficult process. My husband and I have, you know, talked to them, awesome, there were many people from my neighborhood that came in, but I don't think the city has done a good job, or the letter was particularly helpful in knowing how to present data, and I think Mr. Mayor has oversimplified what you need to do to go in there. We were certainly confused, and we're two educated people, and I am, don't know, I'm not even certain we presented ourselves correctly. That's that. But my concerns with this assessor's office run deep, and it's been four years of significant frustration for me of trying to get through to people, and I'm really thankful this assessment data came out. I am completely opposed to accepting KRT's assessments now for the city, or appraisals, because you are creating significant disproportionate assessments because of the poor practices in your assessor's office. And I have run a lot of data to try and get to this. So, I'm just sharing that with you, and I want to put it on the record. It's been very challenging working with my city government, and some people, like I said, Patricia Lee was wonderful, Steve Bolton understood the questions to ask, and I'm appreciative of that. But I think we have a ways to go. Thank you.
Remarks by members of the board? I'll start over here. Alderman O'Brien?
Yes, thank you. I didn't want to do it earlier, but I did yesterday go to a couple of wards, and I too want to extend my thanks to the city clerk and all the people that worked on the polls, they did a fantastic job. It was great to see a lot of people show up for a primary, and congratulations to all the winners and to all the losers. You came out and you did a great job, too. You showed us what democracy is, and it was good to have those choices. So, thank you.
Alderman Smith?
Thank you. First, I'd like to apologize for being late, but I had a very good reason. The Hillsborough County delegation just tonight voted to bring $8 million back to our IDKs, our IDNs in Nashua, supporting all of the programs that help people leaving prisons and hospitals, and I am so glad to have brought that back. Thank you.
Just to follow up, again, thank the clerk's office, I know that I had questions yesterday for them, and I was amazed at how quickly and how quickly they were able to respond and how knowledgeable I was able to get back to folks who had questions with really answers that were, I think, everyone could, could accept. So, thank you for all, all the hard work that the clerk's office had done. And just to follow up on something that Ms., that the mayor had talked about earlier, Ms. Ordolano talked about today, tonight, too. These meetings, if nothing else, it's an opportunity for folks to go talk to KRT, get information... it's an opportunity for folks to go talk to KRT, get information. It's not the end of the process, as the mayor outlined. There are multiple other steps. If you really feel that your assessment is off, you know, it's going to be worth your time to go to these meetings, get information, and then figure out how to approach it later on. So hopefully, folks are happy and satisfied with the process once it's over. Thank you.
Alderman Malizzi-Golia?
Yes. First, I would like to thank Gad and all of the restaurants and breweries and wineries that took part in putting together a great evening Sunday night on Main Street. And the mayor and Alderman Lopez were there serving. And the mayor, I hear, might be serving at MT's. So let us know. And the only request, of course, is that we have heaters because it gets cold when the sun goes down. But it was a delightful evening. And some of us got to sample beers from the brewery that's going to be opening up in the fire station over by the Court Street building. And they were very good. So the second thing is the Everett Turnpike Project. There's going to be a public hearing on October 3, 2018, at the Merrimack High School. The hearing will begin at 7, but the doors will open at 6. So there'll be an opportunity to look at the information they have. And if you would like to look at a draft of the environmental study, it is available at www.everettturnpikewidening.com. The Wheels and Wings event is going to be at the airport. I'm sure Alderman Dowd will be there. That's Saturday, from 10 to 2. And I think something they do that's very important for families who have children who are sensitive to noise, they do a no-horn hour, the last hour. So the sirens will not be going and the horns will not be honking. But your child will still have an opportunity to enjoy the equipment. The last household hazardous waste will be October 6 and November 3. So as we all get ready to clean up and do our fall cleanups, just a reminder that there are two more hazardous waste collections. And finally, I can't believe it was only a couple of weeks ago, but thank you, Mayor Donchus, for all of the city's support for the Nashua Goes Back to School event. Someone said to me, "Oh, well, you do it at the library." And I said, "No, you don't understand. We have fire and we have police and we have parking wreck and we have the library." And certainly, we couldn't do it without the school district's support and all of the principals being there. And as usual, my right-hand person, as I point to my left, Alderman Karen, who coordinates this mini-event of packing the bags, which Mayor Donchus witnessed this year. But just thank you to the city for all of their support and to the committee and Alderman Karen. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. I wanted to thank the board for passing R. 1870. I know that it's a small thing, but helping to reduce congestion downtown for BAE, giving them some alternatives. And certainly, as a member of the Board of the Energy and Environment Committee, I think this is a step in the right direction to help us reduce our energy use.
Alderman Karen?
Thank you. I too would like to thank the city clerk's office. I know they worked very diligently on Election Day and a couple of days prior, too. And this is a good training session, the primary, especially because you do have a lot of new people this year. So kudos to your staff. I also would like to say that I heard that the back-to-school event went very well. Unfortunately, I didn't get there because the senior center was having their annual meeting the same day. And by the time that got done, it was rather late for me to go. But mayor, next year, we're going to bring you in to pack bags with our RSV people. And you can see firsthand how fast they work. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the yard waste removal, R. 18007. It had almost as many amendments as the actual 007. So we went back and forth with basically every possible angle of how to do it fairly. And I think the primary driver of that was to address safety concerns of wet leaves as they would affect motorcycles. I don't think it's intended to be a regular police activity event. So I just wanted to comment on that. And I also wanted to thank Director Marshant and all the work that she's put into the Bridge to Mind Falls project. We broke ground on it last week. Her estimate was that it would be done towards the end of November. And I think it's really important for people who are living in the inner cities to be able to access green space and experience it for themselves. So I'm looking forward to the completion of that project.
Alderman Cle?
Sorry for being late. I had a county delegation meeting. But I just wanted to say a thank you to someone who's not here, and that's Director Photo, who took the time this last week to literally sit with me for four hours and bring me from place to place, to department to department within the Public Works. And I truly appreciate it. It was quite a learning experience. And she said that she is going to do something very similar for all of us. And I think it would be a great, for those who haven't had the chance to do that, I really think it would be a good educational thing. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, yesterday, I got to spend quite a few hours with a past city clerk. And he was explaining to me what the days and duties are of the city clerk the day of elections. And I know that Patricia was up from 3:00 a.m. till 2:00 a.m. the next morning. And everything ran extremely smoothly. And there's so much that she has to do during the day and her staff that we really owe them a debt of gratitude.
Alderman Harriet Gethrake?
I'd like to say thank you, too, to Patricia and her staff in Ward 9. Everything went really well. And it was just good seeing new faces actually inside the poll. So, thank you.
I'd like to add a little bit to that. I went to the New Hampshire election procedures. By the way, it was put on very well. It was at North High School in the theater, which seats 1,031 people. And that's where the Secretary of State brought his people down and they talked about the new things that were taking place. But he did mention a study from Sydney in the Harvard Kennedy School, which they, around the world, they studied the republics and democracies. And in the United States, they pointed to New Hampshire and said that New Hampshire's officials are the first in the nation's for transparency, distributing information to the public. And the Secretary of State certainly could have taken credit, but he didn't. He turned right around and he pointed to people like Patricia and the other people. And I, after sitting there and listening to that and listening and watching, going to the polls, I've got to tell you, everybody who goes to the polls, just thank whomever is there because it's so hot, it's a long day, and with rules that are changing, et cetera. So again, thank you very much for your work. I do appreciate it.
Any additional remarks? Committee announcements? Alderman Malizzi-Golia?
Yes, PEDC will meet next Tuesday, the 19th, in the chamber.
Any other announcements? Alderman Lopez?
Substandard Living Conditions Committee was postponed from tomorrow to next Thursday. So we just rescheduled it to the following Thursday.
Any other business? Is there a motion? Alderman Malizzi-Golia?
To adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at 8:29.